Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, good afternoon. My name is Vernon Robinson. I'm the Chair for Buildings and Grounds. I do believe in the meeting we have Dr. Keenan President, I think Vice President, Dr. Mary Rice. I don't see if I see Stephanie Stedmeyer Walls here.
Yes.
Okay, and Dr. Peddige and Ms. Witts, and who am I? So let's on here.
We also have David Smith from Gardner and Virgil Callaway. I don't know if you said his name also.
So Virgil Smith. The other gentleman?
David Smith from Gardner.
Okay, now coming back. All right. Buildings and Grounds, I'm sure that we have one resolution. And that resolution to authorize with payment to a week. The Phase Two HVAC project going to ORC 167.080 for contract through a regional council of government. Would somebody like to talk about that?
Yeah, I'll jump in. This is in regards to Phase Two. Phase One, if you remember, the board approved retrofitting of all the lights throughout the buildings and also some of the controls. And there were some other HVAC issues that were resolved during Phase One. But this was, this is now Phase Two. And what I did was I brought David Smith from Gardner to come on to give a little bit of information about what is in Phase Two. That's before you for voting on Monday.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Peddige. So as you had mentioned, Phase One was really more of an energy conservation project. Phase Two is more of a capital improvement project. And the difference between the two is that with a capital improvement project, you're replacing equipment that relates to more to health and safety as opposed to energy and sustainability. It's equipment that allows you to operate. And so an example of that is if you had a lighting fixture in a classroom that failed, you could still run class because you have 14 other fixtures that are on. But if you have a school building that loses a boiler, then you, then you run into some problems. And so it's very important to have these types of health and safety equipment analysis is taking place on your buildings to see where you can better put yourself in a position of, of having better infrastructure. So really Kirk boilers, if I give you two examples, Kirk boilers are really two good examples are some of the larger big ticket items on this project as a whole. But at Kirk, you can see major leakage, water leakage when you go down into the boiler room. And that leakage really has been caused because years ago, there was poor water quality treatment for the water that was running into those boilers. And what it did was it created sludge that begins to gum up your boilers themselves. But you take it even a step further. You know, what it does is it also affects your hot water loop system. It affects the coils that you have in your VAV boxes. And so that's one of the reasons why we're replacing Kirk. But I think the, the primary reason is look at the amount of rust that's taken place in that particular boiler itself. I think if you get into that boiler and start looking outside, you can see how it's rusting from the inside out. You know, and then another reason why you would replace a health and, and safety piece of equipment is because it's metachuseful life. Right? The Kirk boiler is 21 years old, the, the Prospect Boiler is 22 years. So overall, the scope of the work is primarily mechanical and controls. The, the project itself, the, the effects of it is going to have an effect on your indoor air quality, the reliability of the system, comfort within classrooms, and as I've mentioned a bunch of times, the health and safety. Now you will save some you, you will save some additional energy, but it's not going to be nearly as much as the energy that you saved in Phase One. And, and we are very happy, just to give you an idea of that Phase One project. As of last November, we were able to save the district about $850,000 in energy bills. Our goal when we originally did this was about 450. So that's, we, we very rarely don't meet that goal, but not typically, we don't almost double it either. So we're happy with it. We hope you're happy with it. From a timeline position, it's tight right now. There's no doubt about it, you know, racing against the clock. The good news is, is that we've already received some of your equipment. I have, we ordered this equipment about a month and a half, two months ago. We already have some split systems in, we have some domestic hot water boilers in. Our project manager has been meeting with Mr. Callaway and, and you know, beginning to lay out a construction timeline. Ultimately, we would like to get in to the buildings during spring break, maybe do some rough in, some preliminary work so that when the kids are let out of school for summer, we can immediately start looking at putting the big ticket pieces of equipment, mechanical equipment that are in the buildings. So that's kind of a 30,000 foot overview. I guess I can kind of stop there and open up any questions anybody might have.
I have one to, just looking at this. What do you mean when you say the project may be funded? What are chances for it being funded? The project may be funded by federal ESSER.
Yeah, I'll speak to that. Yes, we, we are able to use Esser monies for this particular project. So this money that you see here is coming out of, as you see all the way at the bottom, it says it is coming out of Esser Funds 2, Fund 5079022. So in the language of the contract, and really that's where some of that came from, the contractor David Gardner will say it may come from that source. But they can't tell us where the money is going to come from, but we say it there at the resolve. You see there, it says where we're going to give it from, and that's out of Esser 2 monies grant funding.
Okay, thank.
Any other questions? Hearing none. I just do have I spoke with Virgil this past week in regards to there was another break in in chambers. I do believe it has been resolved with the security and the link to East Cleveland Police Department. And to my thinking just vandalizing. Am I correct?
Yeah, and to give you a little bit more than that, the police know who he is, the person that actually did this is the same person. And they had, we, we pulled all the footage, we gave them snapshots. Somebody even saw this person up at a gas station. If somebody lives locally in town and the police have all the information, they just trying to catch that person. But what we're also doing yesterday, we just had a, a meeting with Case Western Reserve's Security Team. And they are starting to do a security assessment at Chambers to give us some insights on some additional things that we can do to secure that building. And they've already given us some contacts. I think Cleveland Public, Cleveland Municipal Schools, a couple of their buildings have gone through looking at some upgrades to security. So we're starting to walk through that this year, towards the end of this year. How can we not only assist the police because they're looking to catch someone that they know, they know his name, they know exactly who this person is. But then also, how can we using the ingenuity of Case Western and maybe Cleveland Municipal Schools as a, as a, as a model, how can we make some additions and some changes to Chambers so that they can't get in?
Okay.
I'm sorry?
They're in a long system.
Yes, so the, the last time, the one Vernon is referencing, the alarm did go off, there's a new alarm system. It did go off. The individual, then it was just about a response time when the authorities could get there. And they responded and, but they weren't able to catch that person in the act. And I won't say publicly what the strategy is for the police, but they do have some strategy that I could maybe share with you offline about how they're trying to catch that person, but I don't want to say it on a public, via a public venue. So their, their particular strategy. But they are working very hard to try to resolve this because they have a lot of information on it.
Dr. Peddige, um, is that one of the reasons why the empowerment is now over at Kirk?
Um, yeah, I, I put the, I put that staff over at Kirk for the purposes of, I could, I didn't, I didn't want to have that staff over there while these issues were happening. So we did temporarily locate them at Kirk so that they can continue to do their business. But their long-term home will be East Cleveland, the Chambers will be the Empowerment Center. But like I said, we're going to go through this process with Case to see what can we do, what haven't we thought of that can maybe solidify that building a little bit better.
Okay, thank you.
Do I have any more question? Hearing none. That concludes Buildings and Grounds. It is now 11:13.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Stephanie Stedmeyer Walls, excuse me, Chairman and Dr. Benidorm Brooks Co-Chiefman. Number one, resolution to authorize a contract with the payment to Dr. Ballen Door. You want to speak on that, Dr. Peddige?
Yeah, this is an individual that we, we found that could help our students and our, actually our teachers and our administrators with assisting our students with SEL, the social support. So this is a professional development for that purpose. To help our young people with the troubles and the issues that they're dealing with while we're trying to work academically. She's been giving, she's been assisted in giving our teachers some tips, some traps, some strategies to help with those social emotional issues.
Okay, thank you. Number two, resolution to authorize a contract with payment to Dr. Tamika Ellington.
And Dr. Ellington has come in and she's been, she was just here this week actually, and Ms. Stedmeyer Walls, you were here, you, you saw her presentation. She has spoken with, she talked to students, she met with a group of young ladies talking about women in leadership, women in East Cleveland and, and talking empowerment. Then she also met with the staff, the teachers and the, the support staff. She's met with them to talk about that same topic. And then we finished that day with a community event where the community came out to listen to her. And there were other activities about women empowerment and, and celebrating women in leadership. We're also looking forward to, I think, April 9th, she's doing a men's event with the dads at Shaw's. She'll be doing an empowerment event with them in conjunction with Al Grimes. So really, she's been able to help us in a number of ways with our parents, with our staff and even our children. She's an individual that grew up, I believe she grew up not too far from here. And her story was compelling to, to those who heard it and just really challenged them to, to achieve their goals. And the results, the, the, the response that we received was overwhelmingly positive. So that's what Tamika Ellington has been doing, will be doing for us, just continuing to support us and talking about empowerment for our parents, our, our women and our men.
To add to that, I was at her talk. It was wonderful. She grew up off 105th and St. Clair. She went to Glendale High School. She was raised by a single parent and she talks about her life, which makes her speaking something that all of us can really, really relate to. She also wrote a book and she has it out and she was signing the book for us. It was a wonderful presentation and I want to commend also Jewel Heath and Ms. Bright Lloyd. They put on a fantastic show for the community. So thank you for letting us have that. And I look forward to going to the men's program. Number three, resolution to authorize a contract with payment to ComMac Incorporated, DBA Mad Science of Northeast Ohio. Okay? Can you give us a little insight on that?
Yeah, and this is a, a resolution that the board sees every year. We've had mad science here for a while. Just working with our students on science-based activities, experiments, grades, kindergarten through eighth grade. So that's what this particular resolution is concerning, that mad science, those activities that students get exposed to.
Thank you very much. And with that, Madam President, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you.
I'm back again. Yes. Welfare and Public Relations Chairman Stephanie Stedmeyer Walls, Co-Chiefman Vernon Robinson.
Did we skip finance?
Well, this comes after, well, according to mine, this comes after education.
The notice, the next on the notice is finance.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I just went by the sheets that I printed off of the thing, but that's fine. I'll, I'll win.
Right, I printed mine out too. We don't have finance. We didn't have finance.
Right.
There's one resolution for the finance committee.
Yes, there is.
Mary Rice here, Finance. There's only one resolution. That's a resolution to accept the East Cleveland City School District Monthly Financial Report for January 2022. Ms. Wood, do you have any comments on that?
The only comment I wanted to make was if you have the opportunity to take a look at it, you will see the same trend that's been happening month to month. We are now through the fiscal year and our expenditures are trending down based on comparing them to last year. Our revenue is trending up. And that's because we are still using Esser funds where we would have used general fund dollars to support some of those things that we're doing in the district. So those carrot funds are really supporting the district so that we're saving general fund dollars. The other thing, Mr. Smith alluded to that. When he was speaking to you on the Buildings and, and Grounds, when he told you, if you guys will recall, I gave you the annual executive summary a couple of months ago showing our electrical avoidance is what we called it because of all of the what we did with the lighting. We have saved approximately $785,520 in our electric bills. If you'll recall, I gave us a copy of that report and we reviewed that. So that's part of what he was just speaking to. But as you see, the revenue continued to kind of increase a little bit and the expenditures go down. It's, those are kind of the primary reasons why we're seeing that happen. And that also addresses itself in that monthly report.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Wood. Anyone else have any questions?
Only thing I have is it didn't come off on my agenda when I printed everything out. So I don't have the finance report at all.
I don't have it reported either. It was the, it was an attachment. It was what? It was an attachment at the bottom of the email. I printed all my attachments out. I just may have missed it. Yeah.
Yeah.
It's on the bottom of the email. Could you or someone tell who was at the meeting today for the, for record, for the sake of the record? No one has stated who was at the meeting. As we usually say, we don't have a roll call, but we do say who's there. And Mr. Robinson did say that. I'm sorry. Mr. Robinson did say who was in the meeting. Did he? I'm sorry. Yes, he did. Okay, all right, thank you. Just wanted to make sure.
If, hearing no other questions, that concludes finance.
Dr. Rice, Dr. Rice.
Yes.
There is one set of minutes that need to be reviewed. Do you want to do that now or later?
Feel free. Feel free to do that now.
Dr. Keenan? Is that the one that you sent to us? Yes, ma'am. I, it's, it's fine as far as I'm concerned. I did, okay. Anyone else have any questions or changes or concerns regarding the February 14th, 2022 minutes, last minutes that were saps?
No.
Okay.
Hearing no other comments regarding the finance, that concludes finance.
Thank you, back guys. Public Relations. Ms. Stedmeyer Walls, you're back. Ms. Stedmeyer Walls, you're muted.
Thank you very much. Starting with Stephanie Stedmeyer Walls, Chairman, Co-Chiefman Vernon Robinson. Number one, professional leave for board members. You're going to HR Keenan, Title IX K-12 Training, Helen Wagner Limited, February the 28th, 2022, no cost. Number two, Mary E. Rice, OSBA Northeast Region Spring Conference, Ohio School Boards Association, March 28th, 2022, Warren, Ohio, General Fund 001 to $40. Number two, acceptance of a donation. Being resolved that the East Cleveland City School District Board of Education accepts the following donations. The source, Lina Hobbs, care of, nutty book program. The purpose, Mayfair Elementary School. The item, 100 variety of children's books and value $400. If there's no questions, that concludes my Welfare and Public Relations Report.
Thank you, Ms. Stedmeyer Walls.
Is that Special Activities Committee?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Special Activities Committee has no report.
Thank you. Updates from Chief Executive Professor and Superintendent, Dr. Peddige.
Thank you, Madam President. What you'll see in my updates here, first of all, you will see on Monday night, Kirk Middle School will be presenting their school and they will be talking about what they're doing to revitalize our district or their building and to move forward with our plan. You also see here under the appointments, there's some new things that are coming in. We've done some MOUs with the Teachers Union in terms of esports. We're bringing that now. And if you realize that, that's something that's catching on in high schools all over the country where they're able to do competitive gaming. And they're able to actually create, they're going to create a team and then they compete with other schools. And they can even get scholarships and they can get opportunities post-high schools. Really excited that esports is now coming on and that's Colston, or no, that's Stevenson and Davis are both doing the e-gaming. We also, you see this, the demonstration teachers. So we received a grant from, we received a grant, the teacher, the TSL grant. And that's the grant, if you remember, Andrew Tisha, she is now the Director of that grant. And we're one of the districts that has that, that grant. We rewarded that grant. It was, I believe, $611,000 a year. And it was the purpose is to incentivize the work that teachers and administrators are doing and really help with what we're already trying to accomplish. So you see there, there's some people that will be demonstration teachers and there's, there's some stipends associated with being demonstration teachers. And what that means is they have to be available and their room needs to be available when other teachers want to learn or see something that we're studying or there's a practice that we found that's really successful. We have some demonstration spaces now that teachers can grow and learn with each other and it's not being pushed down by administration. So I'm really excited about these demonstration teachers and what they're going to do. The C is the Family and Community Engagement Committee. Again, this is another MOU with the Teachers Union where we created another committee, a third committee because we're tied to that revitalization plan. And our third piece there is that family and community engagement. We pulled together some administrators, some teachers, you see some names there. And the Union President is actually in this committee so that we can be, so we can have a serious talk about making sure that our families and our community is engaged. We have PTA, we have Bright Lloyd helping our, our parents. But we need that, that, that structured piece of a committee so that we can move forward and it really creates some opportunities for our families to enjoy. Um, the, the next one there is a change item. I think it was a, is a change item in the, it looks like the amount, the amount had to be, was adjusted based on the contract language. But this is for the Saturday school, elementary school teachers. We do have a, a nice draw of, of families that are interested in Saturday school and whether it's to catch students up or to do some enrichment at the elementary level. We will be running Saturday schools from now through the end of the year. I, I, you also have here the, some supplementals that we're, we're trying to make sure we get all those appointments named. So you see there with Kirk, there's some positions there and Shaw, there's also some positions that we are securing for our clubs and our extracurriculars. And then you see there, whether you see a continuing contract that I'm recommending for one of our teachers. And then also we see people that may be leaving the organization due to retirements or resignations are also in this, in this update. And then also I, I see here in G, we have a Saturday school administrator. We, we changed the, the, again, the fee for that adjusted because of the contract. But we needed to make sure we had somebody in there on Saturdays that was in charge of the program. And then in our classified section, we were able to secure, you see there the position of a cook, a parent liaison, individual to, to assist with parent liaison work. C, I'll park there on that parent revitalization ambassador. This is one of those positions we have for our parents. It's a fifth, I think it's $15 an hour and it's 10 to 20 hours per week. It's part-time. And there's a number of, of ways that families can participate. It really started out the idea of having parents in the building and maybe at Shaw High School, they're, they're in the hallways and they're kind of saying hello to students and creating that environment. But we, 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 it is posted. If others know, you know, someone that may be interested, it is on our website. We are looking for additional parents to fulfill this. But you, you do see one of those positions here on this, on this agenda. And then substitute cleaners and then after-school security guard are all listed there for, for this agenda. I see one more retirement there from a classified individual on the agenda. And then there's a host of professional meetings that are there with a number of different staff, whether it's career tech oriented, whether it's tied to teacher evaluation or even working on computer science and networking. A host of things are now starting to happen in our district where we, we have a, a people going to a number of different professional developments and trainings and then bringing those back for the good of the organization. So I wanted, I wanted to address those also that you see in your agenda. I'll have some more comments on Monday, post the Kirk Middle School presentation. But Madam President, those are my updates for the committee meetings today. Any questions or comments from board members? That concludes Dr. Keenan, my, my portion of the agenda.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Peddige. That seems to conclude, maybe. Do we have any questions or any other issues that we must speak on, Ms. Wood?
I, I do have one other item. It was, it was also added to the bottom of the information that I sent along with the agenda. And it was from the Ohio Auditor of State, the hourly billing rates and allocation of audit costs. I included that for your reference because we, as you know, I have to do that gap audit every year. We use the State Auditor's Office for that gap audit. Their rates have changed. So I just sent you a copy of the rate so that you would see how the rates have changed, but we are still going to use the State Auditor to do that conversion for us. We, we found in the past that if we go out to an outside CPA firm, the State Auditor then comes back and tells
the state auditor then comes back and tells us different things we have to do because it was not done, the conversion was not done by the state auditors. So we use the state auditors. So, um, I just included that so that you would be aware of the rates and know that at some point, um, I would be putting a contract on the, uh, for approval by the board for that gap audit. That's all I have.
Okay. You actually need it on any of that?
No, I shouldn't need it, no.
Thank you. Anything else or anyone else before we close the meeting? Then we will, I don't need a vote on this, right?
No.
Meeting and we will see you again Monday?
Monday at six P M. virtually, on Zoom.
I'm glad you said that. Okay, Monday at six P M.
Yes.
All right, and have a safe, safe weekend.
All right, Dr. Pedigree, I'm running down right quick.